Alrighty, it's five o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. Councilmember Bryant, you mind saying that?
Please, Mayor, as with me, I haven't even thought of we just come to you today and just thank you and praise you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us in our city. We just ask you to be with our city, our managers, our employees, the staff, just thank you for all this work that they do, dear Lord, and we just ask you to, whoa, special blessing unto them. Can I ask you to guide and direct us during this meeting? That we do the best for what we got in our city, the grass laid, amen.
Number one, consider authorization of expenditure for data on Verizon.
Council, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is for the data that is utilized in the police vehicles. The police vehicles actually have two computers in them, they have a MDT that's utilized for running vehicle checks, they can look up active warrants, things of that nature, and they also have their camera system. So with that, they have a Verizon hotspot within their vehicles, and this allows for them to continue that service. This is part of the DIR contract with Verizon, and the estimated expenditure for the year is eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, item two, consider ordinance to establish speed limits.
So with the recent annexations that took place and took effective January first, what I'm doing and what this ordinance is, is all those roadways that we took in, I'm getting those speed limits, those existing speed limits into our speed limit ordinance. So there's half a dozen, a dozen roadways where we've accepted, so I'm getting those speed limits, that's what all this is.
Okay, any questions? Okay, item three, consider text dot agreement for temporary street closure.
This is, downtown Odessa is doing their tapping downtown event again, and their closing grant, so we need to do resolution for with text dot to close roadway for that event. That's what this resolution is.
Any questions? Okay. Item four, consider interlocal agreements between ACI and City of City.
This is just simply interlocal agreement that will allow the Hector County School District's Police Department to use our, to join our regional system, and use it as their primary system. Over the six years of this contract, they will allocate sixty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars to the city.
Any questions on that? Okay, item five, consider approving purchase of AR-15 style rifles.
Okay, this is for the purchase of one-hundred-and-forty-five AR-style rifles. We had a shoot-off with three different brands of rifles, we did Colt, Rock River, and Daniel Defense. The Rock River was by far the better weapon, so that's the one we want to go with. Just a little background, for years, we have had AR-style rifles in our vehicles. What we have is government surplus rifles, the M-16A1 models. We're talking late seventy, early eighty model rifles. They're way too big, yes, way too big, they're very bulk, very bulky, they're not the correct tool, they're not the correct tool for the job. What we're proposing is that we buy these rifles, and officers will buy them from us. So most of the money will come back to the city, through payroll deduction. That way, we can continue this program as new officers come on. These rifles are totally legal for anyone, any civilian to own. We will also outfit them with optics and flashlight.
This is just an effort to get our guys the right tools for the job. The unfortunate thing is that sometimes we see criminals out there with much better weaponry, guns than we have, so this is just one to get us on par.
And this is one of our approved supplementals that was done out of leftover revenues at the end of the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year.
But they have to pay for them?
This is something they absolutely want to do. We polled the officers, and we had over ninety-two percent response, they want to do this.
They want to buy them and own them themselves?
Correct.
So it comes out as supplemental, but not really? I mean, it comes out and wears off?
Well, we have the upfront cost to get them into the program to buy the rifles, and then it's a...
What do we set up on the payroll today?
Oh, eighteen months.
Eighteen months, it'll come back in. So we had to approve the expenditure upfront, so it came out as supplemental.
Okay, any other questions? Everybody good? Okay, item six, consider resolution to accept the appropriate additional funds from the 2018 HIDA grant program.
Okay, the HIDA grant program, HIDA is a high-intensity drug trafficking area, which we are part of, it's mandated, or excuse me, it's administered through the DEA. We have a task force officer assigned to DEA, and this, the fourteen thousand, six hundred would go to help pay for his overtime costs. The additional three thousand that they've allocated this year would go to help fund a uniformed officer on overtime, so it wouldn't affect our manpower on the street, but on overtime to help with interdiction efforts that the DEA is involved. In other words, if they get a car they need stopped, we will provide a mark unit on overtime status to help them stop any, maybe possible drug curfew at that point.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Item seven, discuss 2020 census.
Mayor, Council, as you know, we are coming up on 2020, and every year, the government requires that we do a discentennial census count. Today, we've got two folks from the U.S. Census Bureau, Mr. Roque Augen and George Whitmire. Roque is the partnership specialist. But I can't tell you how important it is for us to make sure that we fully participate in the census, in particular, given our city's growth, the fact that we have so many people coming into our community, the fact that we have so many man camps. We've got a lot of people here, and I think it's incumbent upon us to do as complete account as we possibly can, because it does impact several things. I mean, it could possibly impact funding that we get from the federal government or the state government, but more importantly, it allows you, the council, to really know who's here, what number of people that are here, so you can effectively make decisions to impact those individuals. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Augen.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. Mr. Phillips, thank you so much, Mayor. City Council, thank you so much for your time. My name is Roque Augen, I'm originally from the island of Guam, I'm a PhD student stationed at UTEP. This is my colleague, George Whitmire, he specializes in veteran affairs. We are partnership specialists from the El Paso Area Census Office. The El Paso Area Census Office is part of the twelve-state Denver region, goes all the way up to North Dakota. El Paso Area Census Office includes sixteen counties, El Paso east, all the way to Hector and Midland, down south to Terre Haute, Rooster. So the Census Office and Census Bureau, we've been working diligently since the last census to begin our efforts with 2020, and we have been working with city management and folks at Hector County to put together what's called a complete count committee. It's just something we're here to talk to y'all about and kind of walk y'all through census basics. Some of us have been through it before, there's some changes from 2010, feel free to engage in conversation, question any time you want to take those questions. So what's at stake, and why do we do it? And we do it because it's constitutionally mandated, that's the bottom line, right? So every ten years, we do it. In terms of importance, why we do the census, you see that by the end of the year, we're going to be disseminating results of the census in 2020 to the President of the United States as mandated for apportionment of representation amongst the states, the congressional districts, how those voter lines are drawn, for state legislative districts, school districts, and voting precincts, very important. Census numbers are used to enforce voting rights and civil rights legislation, and to distribute federal dollars to the states, which is one point we're going to elaborate on a little bit more as we proceed, and to inform planning decisions, many governments, the state, local, what we do here with the city and county as well, and organizational decisions, economic impact, as businesses are growing and expanding, as communities are growing and expanding, like what's happening here with Odessa and Hector, with all the new businesses coming in, they want to go to a federal government source, they want to go to an accurate source that has the numbers that they need to know about that demographic, how it has grown come over 2000, 2010, and what's anticipated for 2020. They want to know the economic vitality that is there in that community. They want to know the median income of the folks that are the households and individuals, they want to know what kind of professional background, what kind of education, they want to know if these households have youngsters, they want to know if they have elderly, they want to know how they live, whether they're in a home, whether they're in an apartment. So these economic indicators, and all the different socioeconomic statuses, they're very important to a business and government and their planning, all come from the 2020 census, all come from the decennial census. This slide here shows you, and you have a copy of it in your lap, 2010, in terms of apportionment, when we get this count out or not, seats may be lost, or seats may be gained. In the current political environment, it is a reality, Texas is projected to gain three or four seats in 2020, if we get the count out, county by county, all over the state. In 2010, you see some states which lost congressional seats. In Texas, we picked up four. Federal funding for Texas, county dollars, county federal dollars, the studies from George Washington University based upon 2015 numbers, you have a more detailed, larger handout that was just passed out to you, so you can see what these different numbers are saying, and what these words are saying. They are essentially program names that are used by the federal government to facilitate funds to the states that come to the cities and come to the counties. So Department of Transportation, highways, the federal funding for financial aid at the institutions, funding for welfare, funding for special needs, Medicare, Medicaid, grants for community development, all come from census numbers. Those formulas are worked on by the federal government, determined by the census numbers. What's at stake? Forty-three billion dollars, probably more now. What does that mean per capita? Close to sixteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars per person in this community over ten years. So these numbers are real, in terms of the economic grants, the development grants that can help a community grow. Our goals for the 2020 census are to maintain quality, reduce costs, and we have four areas of innovation to do that. Building that address list, address canvassing will begin shortly, where we work with state, local governments, to fine-tune what, who those addresses belong to, where are those addresses, and what are those addresses. An easier way to respond, this is the first time ever in the history of the census, since the seventeen hundreds, that we are offering the census on the internet. So yes, you will receive the questionnaire via your home address, and yes, you'll be able to respond by phone call, the first time on the internet. I can assure you that reading over the very thick field operations manual that we're required to review before we come here, that the Census Bureau has, and the team of statisticians and field operatives over the last ten years have spent a lot of time and energy rigorously testing the rollout of this online system. Better use of information we already have, and more efficient field operations, which gets to my point about our goals, the 2020 census goals. Again, starting March twenty-third, 2020, the internet, the phone, the paper, phone. At this point, and this goes to the next slide, you say, "Well, why are you here now?" That's kind of far away. Well, the operational timeline says that we're right where we need to be, which is opening up our area census offices, which is El Paso is going to open up this summer. The Midland-Odessa team, the partnership specialists, we're a part of the El Paso Area Census Office. So, you know, we've got the hiring going on, we're opening this area census office. As you can see, we're rolling into the end of nineteen, conducting the address canvassing. In 2020, they begin enumeration out in Alaska, group quarters begin, group quarters are for homeless individuals. Update leave begins, that means a second time they come back to your address to see if you're actually responding or not, because they're going to give you the initial chance to respond yourself, and this is the first time with the use of technology, that the field operations will give live, up-to-the-minute updates to the field teams that this address or that address did or did not respond. So before, in the questionnaire, it was paper, it was a long process, people get missed. So using technology, we're avoiding these kinds of situations. The internet self-response begins in March, Census Day is April one, 2020. At the end of the day, with residency requirements, you have two rules. Where are you the most? Because the goal of the census is, we're going to count you, we're going to count you once, and where in the right place, make sure you counted in the right place. Where are you the most? And secondly, the bottom-line rule when it comes to residency is where are you on April one, 2020? And I know that's an important question for the group and the community, the region, and actually the entire Denver region, because we've got oil fields all up and down, about the man camps, right? And then you'll see that we have non-response follow-up, that's enumerators door-to-door, and then delivering that count to the president by the end of the year. So we are on the front end of educating the community leaders, the government officials, and El Paso Area Census Office, we've got communication happening with the city and county, putting together a joint complete count committee, which I'm going to get into. A complete count committee is essentially a community organization that is driven by themselves, guided by the census, to develop outreach strategies for hard-to-count populations. Your veterans, your homeless, your students, your elders, you're saying, the poor, low-income, single mothers, children under five. Children under five is a huge area of undercount, because of single parenthood, mom don't know whether to consider it, dad don't know, and sometimes do it with grandma, grandpa. So we need every community's help, your help, in helping us understand this and outreach to that, to the different communities that are out there. Again, this is your area census office that you're all part of, El Paso, all the way Midland, Upton. We've been meeting with the Permian Basin Region Planning Council, and Ms. Ballou and her team have been very helpful. They've helped us outreach to, we have the group, we have about, what, six, six of our sixteen counties that we have are in the Permian Basin Region Planning Council, excuse me, ten, ten of them, six are in the Rio Grande Council of Governments, so she's been helping us with that. The Community Partnership and Engagement Program, which is who we belong to in terms of partnership specialists, we have goals to develop partnerships with government, corporate, chambers of commerce, education. I just came from, we just came from the UTPB office, President Dr. Woodley, met with them, they're excited, they're supportive. We let them know of all the positive work happening here with the city of Odessa, the Hector County, and they want to help. So they will also be putting together their own complete count committee for their own community, because they have, what, seven thousand plus? But as you will see as I go through the slides, higher education is a part of that educational component, even preschool, early childhood, to help us develop the right team of stakeholders that come to the table to develop that strategy, to connect those networks, so that we can identify who are the people, who are the hard-to-count populations, where are they, how do we reach them, who's the best person to do that, to have that voice? Because us at the Census Bureau, you know, honestly, we get folks with ill-conceived ideas in their head about the Census Bureau and the federal government, they think the Census Bureau is going to knock on your front door, and you better run out the back door. That kind of misinformation is something that we need trusted voices for. That's why y'all are important.
Just a question.
Sir?
Who knocks on the doors?
The numerator Census Bureau.
So the Bureau is hiring people in Odessa?
Yeah.
Okay, just...
You're not doing the count, are you?
Finding employees is a little tough.
We've heard about that, eighteen dollar an hour dishwasher at McDonald's?
Yeah, so I mean, if you can't find them locally, where are you going to get them?
That would be part B of a question that we'd have to address with folks above my pay grade, but I appreciate the opportunity to get back to you right now.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, as an employer, it's, I can tell you what you're going to get, and most of them are convicted felons trying to help, it's a work pool.
Twenty-three dollars an hour is essentially what we're offering to start. Some of the work will be part-time. No, I mean, some of it's short-term, some is long-term, part-time opportunities, some is full-time opportunities.
You're going to be a part-time employee.
We have a recruiting assistant that's been out here in this area, working with the workforce development folks, talking with UTPB, they're open to sharing that with their career center, their students. You have certain groups in the community that look to those kinds of opportunities, you know, folks that are retired, got time on their hands, go knock on some doors, and they do it at their convenience, they do it on their schedule, right? It's part-time, so it's easy money, really. You know, there's some accountability involved, and you've got to be a U.S. citizen, but, you know, I mean, there's ways to target the veterans, there's ways to target folks that are students, and those that are over sixty-five, or just those that are retired, period, right?
Billy Tyler would be a good contact. And we met him last week when he was out.
Yeah, right. Thank you, Mayor, for your question. So what is a complete count committee? Tribal, state, local governments work together, partners, form CCCs, this is the most effective tool the census has learned about, that they've been using to do that, to do the kind of outreach, their own network of individuals in that community. So you have a broad spectrum of government, community leaders, again, education, business, healthcare. So we've been working with city manager, Marero, to start identifying who those individuals would be, and when to do it, when the formation is happening now, hence the resolution and our visits out here, that's an item of discussion on your agenda, and I hope that you would consider approving that.
You'll see that next week.
So our goal is to get a successful census count. And across the nation, best practices with city and larger, mid-to-larger cities, come together, a city and county, and work together, it's happening in El Paso, it's happening here, it's happening with Midland as well. You have mayor and county chair, right? Sometimes the mayor will appoint one chair, so the co-chairs, county judge appoints another, they run these, this committee, they have a group subcommittee, they're staffed by the city or the county. What we've seen work is the community development, takes a lead role in the organization. The role of the partnership specialists, and this may have changed from before, is to act as a liaison for the committee, between the committee and the census. So the partnership specialist is not a staff member, he's there to guide, to advise, and facilitate communication. Whatever this group decides to do, however they decide to do, here you see examples of different subcommittees that are created, right? So it's not unusual that UTPB will be on the education, city of Odessa CCC, but have their own, and then also be on the Midland City, Midland County CCC, right? Because of their interests. The point is, they work in these subcommittees, they come up with ideas, they discuss their network, they discuss the opportunities, and they discuss financing, how to fund it. You can want to, you can want to put out social media, and marketing materials, and branding materials, we can help you with all that. By the end of the day, you may want to have staff as well. In Phoenix, they dropped one-hundred, one-point-five million dollars and hired themselves an advertising firm. Well, we're not as big as Phoenix, but we still have commitments and pledges coming from city, county, and philanthropic partners to make those financial goals real. So some of our goals and challenges is motivating people to respond, misinformation about the census, not knowing how to use technology, there are opportunities for us to have workshops with the city and county and facilities, using the internet that's here to help people learn how to fill out a questionnaire. Assure the responsiveness that their data are confidential and secure, we are obligated by Title XIII U.S. Code not to share information. When we get sworn in as census employees, that's something we have to swear to as well. Educate about the importance, which is what we're doing, and supporting communities and mobilization efforts. Your ideas, your community, driven by your goals. Here you see community engagement and partnership program, different census staff that we have, myself, and other partnership specialists in the state, tribal specialists for tribal communities, regional data dissemination specialists for your planning departments. We have data specialists that come in to really do a deep dive into how to use census data, because you can zone in on certain areas and find out about the hard-to-count populations, the low-response areas as well. We have national media contacts, and the national media contract that'll be launched, we have national partnerships and promotional items that we can avail to you as well, and we'll be here to support the local complete count committee. Here you see one of the tools used in the CCC training, which would happen in a next step after the resolutions pass, the partnership special census staff will come in and will work with your assigned individuals and appointed individuals, and train them on how to understand all the tools that they have to understand their community, because here you can find all your hard-to-count areas and your low-responsive areas, and you can zoom into blocks and streets and tracks and find out what the demographics are, what the socioeconomics are. So this is a useful tool as well, it's called Response Outreach Area Mapper. On census.gov, you go to Partner Link, we have some partner toolkit, different branding tools that you can use, you can customize for your own as well. We also have a page of activities that's dedicated to schools. Part of our visit here, we're going to meet tomorrow with ESC-18 at the superintendent's meeting, and Ms. Jolly helping us with that. We're going to all the superintendents that are in this region, we're going to be sharing with them some of the tools that we have to get them involved with the complete count committees as well. Media and advertising at a national level will be launched next year, early. And this right here is a local campaign that we wanted to share with you, real short video, the idea that El Paso came up with, which is, you guys do what you want, but this is a good example of the kind of creative empowerment, and, yeah, and ideas that can come together, and they just did this on their own when they kicked off.
Every ten years, the United States counts every resident. It's called the census.
I am El Paso!
I am El Paso!
I am El Paso!
We need your help to count everyone.
The information you provide is protected by law.
The 2020 census is coming, and everyone needs to be counted.
We need everyone to be counted because the county's more transportation funds.
More housing funds.
More healthcare funds.
A louder voice in the U.S. House of Representatives.
For me.
For you.
For us.
And some aspiring politicians. So that was put together by the city's public affairs team, and they run it under a closed-circuit channel on cable, and they... So that was put together by the city's public affairs team, and they run it under a closed-circuit channel on cable, and they run it in their own channels within the, the city, and they have it on their website, they have it on their YouTube channel. They created a link from their city website and county website to their own Census page, right? So to start beginning that effort, so the ideas are, are limitless, we just have to take some critical steps. And what's next is asking you to please help us in taking that leadership, continue to do that, because of your blessing and the hard work of Mr. Phillip and Mr. Mareo, the city manager, we've been able to move this ball forward, and we appreciate that. Continue to take an active role in the local complete count program, support us in our recruiting efforts to get the word out, help us identify those trusted voices, faith-based organizations. We've been working with the city manager, and if you have ideas and contacts, we'd hope that you'd share those as well, and help us educate the community on self-response to include the niños, the little kids. Jobs are available, twenty-twenty census.gov. George, rest your cue.
Yeah, we've also got some other jobs you're asked about also. Uh, I'm gonna give a couple of cards out. This is really geared toward the eighteen to above US citizens. These jobs start at about twenty-three dollars an hour, and, and they're part-time, that's the guys that do the actual address canvassing and things of that nature, and eventually enumerators for short term, that rate for a retired individual, or a kid coming out of high school, or a kid coming out of college, that wants some money to go back to school the next fall.
So the bottom line is your community will count the twenty-twenty Census, so you can help us, you're the experts, and we're here to help you. Put that, thank you for your time, and we'll allow ourselves to be here.
Is there an estimate on what the Census costs? I know that you mentioned Phoenix put up a million-five, is there any estimate of what, when you pay twenty-three, eighteen, twelve, fifteen, whatever it might be, what the Census costs?
So in terms of the Census overall nationwide, it'd be, would be a different number than the number that I'm talking about, just to clarify, the one-point-five for Arizona, for Phoenix, that was one-point-five earmarked for the complete count committee. So the overall number of the complete count committee, I'll have to get back to you, Councilman, on that one. But in terms of what we're, what we're proposing here, and thinking about here to discussion, based upon two thousand-ten numbers, and what the goals are in terms of the population count for the City of Odessa, Hector County, you know, the number that I hear being thrown around, anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand.
We participated financially in two thousand-ten to the tune of about twenty-five thousand dollars. Obviously, we're thinking of this area might take a little bit more, and then Midland is probably looking at a number closer to a hundred thousand. Uh, but I think they're gonna do that, certainly, there will be some funds coming from the city, some from the county, and they're also looking for sponsors to help with those dollars. But again, the importance of the count can't be understated, so we're gonna have to look at that. So we'll continue to work with, with Roque and develop a number that we think will be appropriate in order for us to have a successful count.
Sure.
You know, I'm, I wanna make one comment, and I don't want it to sound negative, because I'm excited about the Census. Boy, and I think we all need to be working, you know, to get people out. Twenty-ten Census. Some of the city offices, fire department in particular, housed some of the Census workers, and I would strongly recommend that there be a little more emphasis on their attire. Uh, some of, we made the comment several times, we probably wouldn't open our doors to them coming in. You know, they just, they were not dressed in a professional manner, it was just like going out in the yard to work, kinda clothes. And I'm not saying suit and tie, you know, I don't, I don't mean that, but that, it was very obvious to us, you know, with the Census workers coming in and out, just... That, that was just one thing that I would really hope that maybe the workers would take a little bit more pride in their personal appearance, you know, when they're more out.
Are they identified anyway, by shirt or name?
They wear a name tag, is that not correct?
I'll have to double-check on that and find out what the protocol is.
I wanna say in twenty-ten, they, they had some type of a lanyard with an ID on it.
Yeah, don't give them this ad to add these.
Yeah. And, and so, as far as I know, they, they all wore those, I mean, we saw them, you know, wear them pretty often with their T-shirts.
We've begun to compile a list of who might be important to include in the complete count committee. Obviously, there are several different populations that will be targeted, it'll be just a general population, but there are special populations, like the homeless, so we're gonna involve the homeless group. Uh, we're gonna involve, obviously, the school district, and those groups that deal specifically with children, first five comes to mind, and others. We're gonna work with the veterans groups, of those agencies that help veterans, that's a difficult population to, 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 to count. Also, we'll be working with groups who work with the immigrant population, because that's another group that will need to be counted. Internally, we intend to utilize the planning and community development staff to help with the effort. Those folks are the ones who, quite frankly, deal with the Census data more frequently, so they're gonna be most familiar with it. We're gonna have joint, we're gonna continue to have meetings with the Census group. Uh, we will also, at some point, have a joint meeting with the county, because the county will have to make a similar effort, because there's obviously a lot of folks outside of the city limits that need to be counted. So this work will continue, it'll be a long process. I will tell you that in two thousand-ten, I, I don't think we necessarily counted everybody, 'cause I think all of us felt that we were far more than a hundred thousand, yet our numbers did not bear that. So again, it'll be critical this year that we are, the coming year, that we do as complete a count as we possibly can.
And Councilman, if I may, go back to your question about the cost.
Yes, sir.
The projected life cycle cost of the twenty-sixteen Census is, is, uh, is fifteen-point-six billion, and that's from the complete life cycle.
The question is where they are on April first, is that right?
Well, the residency rules, there are a lot of different caveats coming out of category, but at the end of the day, the final determining question is, where are you on April first, twenty-twenty?
So it doesn't matter where your residence, where your permanent residence is?
Sir, it depends, and that goes back to the residency requirements. There are residency requirements, but the key factor is where are you on April the first, it's when we do the Census. But there are a whole host of other reasons that could cause a count, but there's not anybody gonna be going back behind someone and verifying that, uh, the double count.
Let me ask you this, on, for either one of you, like, on the Census count, you know, I know on the, on the old, old Census, you know, uh, how they were situated, but like, on our situation now, we have a lot of men and women that are just working here, they're just here during the work week, but they have families residing somewhere else. So how, how are they to respond? Does the employee that's working here respond as an individual, and then the family counts in Missouri or wherever?
You wanna take that first?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take that, yeah, 'cause we've been discussing this, especially in terms of petroleum and the gas industry. So one of the ways we're, we're, because it's not just a problem that, an issue that is exclusive to the Permian Basin region, throughout the Denver region, we have North Dakota, South Dakota, we have oil fields there, Louisiana as well, so it's a, it's a popular issue. So the point being that, when we just, when we develop this complete count committee, this question is ripe for all these brains to come together and attack. And specifically inviting a member of the Petroleum and Gas Association, or Associations, or Corporations, or Entities, to have them at the table as employers, I think that's a key next step, to address how we do that, right? Because if it's the employer, we wanna get the employer involved, to let the individuals that are doing this work, let them know about the Census.
You know, it just seems so difficult, because, you know, if you ever get into genealogy, you know, that's a pretty critical thing, you're, you're wanting to list the household, and his head of household, and spouse and dependents, from that point, that dad's working here, then it makes it look like that's a single-family, or a single-parent family, you know?
Yeah.
That, that's a, that's gonna be a kind of a interesting.
And I'm understanding it from the government position, which is, which is, we wanna maximize our count for every individual.
Yeah, we do.
Right, the city and the counties wanna do that, 'cause those dollars matter, those, the, the way those congressional lines and apportionment happens, it matters, right? So for here, that's why it's important to bring in these, these corporations and organizations to figure out, okay, now, how do we get to your employees? How do we make sure, one, they know about it, two, are informed and educated enough to know that, whether you're a citizen or not, you're counted? There's a lot of misinformation out there about it. Bottom line, when it comes to the Census, citizen or not, you're counted. So you might have an employee at a, at a band camp that thinks that he don't matter, no, we, we need to change that, we need to make sure folks know what the real facts are.
So, so does, does each person, in response to Dietrich's question, if you've got a wife and three kids in Missouri, is she going to fill out a census for herself and the three kids? The husband is out here, and in response to your first question, you said, is where do you spend most of your time? Then he would fill out a separate form for himself here?
Well, the way the address canvassing works, right? The, the Census Bureau is working with the different city, county, and state governments to identify those different addresses. So again, back to the technology being used, you have an address here, let's say it's in Oklahoma, Oklahoma, the house is here with the wife and the kids, that's the address that's, that's there. But then you have this husband that's over here in Odessa Permian, right? And so he's over here working. Now, the challenge becomes for the complete count committee, that's why messaging and, and helping that employee know how to fill out that form, because at the first stages of the, of the Census responses in March of twenty-twenty, it's gonna be self-response.
But that's what I'm asking you.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you, I mean, like, write man, I mean, what would you be telling them?
We educate, yeah, we educate them, we educate them that, that if you, like, I mean, for, for on test purposes, for the City of Odessa, we want that family counted in Odessa. So I'm gonna do my best to make sure somebody from that corporation is at that complete count committee table to help us get to that daddy who's doing the working, so that when he, he fills out a questionnaire, and he communicates to his wife, honey, we're going to do it this way, you're gonna market City of Odessa. That's an example.
So, so in that, what you just said, then, the whole family would be treated as City of Odessa?
Correct.
Even though they're not here, April?
Correct, 'cause he's, he, he's the head of household, he's the one filling out that form.
So the head of house, okay.
But then you gotta go to the RV camps.
We, we talked with Roque about that, I mean, the reality is, we've got so many people here living in unatypical housing situations, man camps, RV camps. And I think to maybe expand on Peggy's question, um, and we talked initially, 'cause I, I think that was one of my first questions to you, a lot of these council people are man camps. And I think you said it was a combination of where they are, and how, the frequency that they're here, for example, if they're here more than half the year, and they're here on April one, then they're gonna be counted here.
That's right, they're counted here. 'Cause they're gonna self-respond.
In the back a week, in the two weeks, in the back a week.
Some of them, yes, sir.
And because they're the head of household, and that determines it's gonna...
Well, because they're self-responding for that household, right? Because initially, it's self-response, and then that means that you're gonna, you're going to get a notice in the mail, that there's a, there's a website, you're gonna hear on TV and the media, there's a website, go and you can fill this out. Once you fill that out for that address, that questionnaire, it's gonna go back to headquarters, and it's gonna clear that address off of the list. But the next stage becomes after that, that internet announced in March, okay? And you can call in and do it, the next stage will become, well, who has not responded? So non-response follow-up, then that's when they start identifying people to go knock on the doors to. Now, at that point, a Census worker will walk you through it, and if that young man's not here, there's no way for the workers to talk to him. So that person, that family's gonna be counted in Oklahoma.
And I guess I just, it seems like that we are at a great risk of that, because these, these people that are coming out here and working in the oilfield two or three weeks, and then they go home for a week, or a weekend, or whatever. I mean, if, the, the wife typically then is gonna be at home, and she's gonna see that, and she's gonna fill that out.
Or our, our Census workers will be knocking on her door.
Knock on her door, and so, this guy out here, even if he went in to try to fill one out, it's already completed in Oklahoma or somewhere else, right?
We gotta have, we gotta have help, the oilfield company.
Absolutely.
It's a moving ball, ma'am, I, I get it, I get it, 'cause on the other end of it, in Oklahoma, they wanna, they want that family's count.
Yeah.
Right?
I get that.
So, you know, that aggressive, that's why we're thinking of this now, 'cause if we wait too long, you know, you'll get behind the eight ball, you'll lose a lot of folks.
It's probably not as much an issue in the city, but the county has got mobile home parks that don't have addresses.
We have...
Don't tell them, haven't you?
We, we have a specific way of counting field operation strategy for that, transitional.
Any more questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all much. Okay, number eight, discussion of Senate Bill Two.
Mayor, I think this will be a tag-team discussion with Cindy, Gary, myself, and Phillip. Uh, but we wanted to, to visit with you a little bit about Senate Two, Senate... Senate Bill Two, um, this is probably the second or the third legislative session that this has come up, uh, and this is an effort by the state of Texas to limit our ability to raise revenue. Uh, essentially, what the state is, would, might be proposing, uh, this legislative session, is a cap on our ability to, to, to raise property tax. Obviously, tax is how we generate a big portion of our revenue. It has the impact of limiting our ability to do so many different things. Um, it has the, it has the net effect of limiting our ability to, to, uh, to hire police officers, to work on roads. We've estimated that a two percent property tax cap means about one-point-two, one-point-five million dollars to the City of Odessa. Phillip is gonna provide you some information.
Talking about four percent, correct?
It depends, I'll leave that way. I'm gonna let Gary kinda talk a little bit about it, um, and he's gonna give you a bit more detail, and then Phillip is passing out some information, he'll, he'll talk a little bit about what that means for us locally, and plus, we'll show you a short video that TMO has put out related to Senate Bill Two.
All right. The information you get now is a spreadsheet that Cindy did that shows you some of the numbers, and then the other sheet that Phil came up with, kinda takes those numbers and translates it into specific city purchases, and the effect it has. This is a recurring issue at the legislature, and it's, it's political, but it is the state government really interfering with your direct ability to raise money, to pay for the things that you decide your citizens need. So it's, it's a core vital issue, it's one where, um, it's useful if what should come out of this is a resolution that we can have on the next council agenda, where you're just reminding the legislature that, to be aware that you are responsible, competent, local, elected people who understand the results of the tax decisions you make. And it's also an example of, I don't mean to sound too negative or political, but it's an example of how the legislature, we've really elected a lot of people in Austin, who, who just sincerely don't understand how Texas economics work. And, um, there's, the governor said an emergency issue was school financial reform. Well, it's the, it's the way, one of the specific reasons behind the move by some in Austin to limit property tax and to change rollback rates, is because it's school districts all over the state that have the highest rates. If you look at cities and counties and special districts, they're all down here, and they're, they're going up, but they have expenses. But then you have school districts that are way out of proportion, and that's because, as y'all know, years ago, the legislature tinkered with the system, and they changed it. And so now there's more of a burden on local government, the local government entities to pay for things, and it's just ironic, I, I can't explain it... And it's just ironic. I can't explain it very well because I don't understand it. At the same time that the legislature transferred the responsibility and obligation for more of local services to local government, they began their efforts to vigorously limit the ability of local government to raise taxes because when the state cuts back the money it sends, the buck stops here. The buck doesn't stop in Austin. It actually stops in every city hall in Texas. Now, I am an advocate for cities, but that's, I think that's the way it's actually working right now. It's a little bit scary.
When the mayor and I were in Austin a couple of weeks ago, the governor made this as one of his four top priorities. So we are pretty certain it'll get on the floor now. Whether or not, the last couple of times it's gone out there, it's been beaten before it came to the floor.
Usually goes down in the House.
Yes.
I feel like the Senate's gonna look for it. They think that's the House is where they're gonna have to hang out.
We just don't know about this year and whether or not it will make it to the floor, so.
Kel Seliger said one thing. I was talking to Kel about it. He's former mayor, so he understands. And he said, okay, if you're gonna be against it, be against it. But don't just say no. Come up with an idea. And his idea was, he said, okay, put a ten percent cap on appraisal values. So you can't raise your appraisal value more than ten percent. That's easier to sell than just say no. Because that's what they're gonna throw back is, okay, then what do you want us to do? And this came out of Austin, Dallas, all those, where the appraisal values are just gonna shoot crazy. And they're throwing us in on it because we're part of the state. It's not as bad here as it is in Austin or anywhere else. But they're trying to fix everything and it's gonna hurt us.
What you'll see at the next council meeting is a resolution that simply states that we would like to maintain, in essence, maintain local control. And we'll be shipping that to our legislators. They, and I think our legislature legislators, we've had conversations with those individuals and I think they get it. And this is something that every city is doing. As a matter of fact, there was an article this weekend. Mayor Morales had a big article on why the city of Midland opposes Senate Bill as well. Phillip, you wanna, I'll tell you what, why don't you talk about the impact to the city of Odessa based on that reduction?
Sure. So this first sheet, the long one, is Cindy's spreadsheet. If you're still in your thunder, Cindy, tell me.
You'll manage, so it starts out with, the rollback rate is made up of two rates. It's made up of your maintenance and operation rate. And that's where we get the eight percent additional over our prior year rate, okay? That's what we currently get. So what was initially proposed in Senate Bill Two was to lower that to two and a half percent. So the first column for eighteen shows you what we did at one point oh eight versus what it would be at one point oh two five if they pass it. Your debt service, your debt tax rate is set according to what your debt service cost is gonna be. So they don't control that. So the change would have been a loss of a million five seventy-eight had we had to go back. And then the prior year was a million one. In two thousand and sixteen, it wouldn't have made any impact because we did not raise our tax rate to the rollback rate that year. And even under the one point oh two five, we would have still been under. So no impact that year. And then it would have been one point two back in fifteen, just to show you over a period of time what that would be. And then Phillip can talk to what that amounts to basically.
Counsel, looking at the one point five million reduction based on a two and a half percent, I put together some quick figures with the help of department directors. But as you can see with that amount, that would reduce nineteen firefighters within the fire department. That's what one point five million would cost us. One point five million buys you nineteen police officers for the city. As it relates to public works, that's fifteen linear miles of seal coat to rejuvenate our streets. And then the Parks Department looked at what it would be, a reduction of one point five million in their account. And there's various items on here, but this includes reducing a lot of the maintenance in the parks. So you would have dilapidated parks, losing some positions within the parks as well. And then on the last item, the parks divided, that's actually the equivalent of the budget at Ratliff Ranch. So with this reduction, the city would definitely take a hit. And that would be a decision that the council would have to come up with of where do you wanna take that hit? And what services do you want to be affected by that?
Phillip, that's a quick video we want to show you from TMO.
So TMO is an advocate against this, of course, and they provided a video that they're gonna start circulating. And I'd let Mr. Moore know about this, so we'll play that here. It's a short video.
If you own a home or business in Texas, you know your property taxes are high and they keep going up every year. Here's why. For many years, the state legislature has been cutting the state share of funding for public schools and counting on rising property taxes to make up the difference. Look at your property tax bill and you'll see that about half to three-quarters of your money goes to your local school district. Statewide, about fifty-five percent of property taxes go to school districts. Texans are fed up with high property taxes. Instead of fixing the school finance problem, some state officials are doing what politicians typically do. They're trying to shift the blame to someone else. They want to convince you that cities are the cause of high property taxes, but here's the truth. Only sixteen percent of property taxes go to cities. So instead of fixing the real problems, they want to restrict the source of funding for your police and fire protection, for street repairs, economic development, trash collection, parks, and all the other services people and businesses depend on every day. State officials want to limit our ability to make local budget decisions and reflect our local priorities. Limiting increases in the sixteen percent of your tax bill that pays for basic city services won't result in real tax relief for Texans. It's just a political smokescreen created so state legislators can avoid dealing with the broken school finance system that's driving up our property taxes. It's time for state officials to tell the truth, do their jobs, and fix the real cause of high property taxes. And let us make our own decisions about the local services we want and need in our community.
Again, counsel, our intent is to bring you a resolution simply indicating that we would like to retain our local control and have more say over how you generate revenue. That was it, Mayor.
Okay. Number nine, appointment divorce.
Counsel, Mayor, this is more of a housekeeping item. These appointments were made at the last council meeting. But according to the ordinance, counsel, and we had this discussion at a briefing session for the ODC, we were gonna have a mayor or mayor pro tem as a non-voting member on the ODC board. And on the compliance committee, councilmember Dean would be serving as a non-voting member. When we did those appointments, we did not do those. So if I could just, it's just that housekeeping, have a motion for, okay.
Motion in a second. Motion in a second.
Make motions in here?
Yep, because it's, yeah.
It's posted.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, motion passed, unanimous.
The next one is for the Odessa Housing Finance Corps to appoint Megan Gossip, as we did last time.
Okay, the motion.
So.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, motion passed, unanimous.
Thank you.
And we stand adjourned.